Good evening. I'd like to call the October City Council meeting to order and invite Pastor Linda Ross up for our invitation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to go with you before the throne. There is two points I want to make in James 5 and 16, and it begins to talk about prayer, that first of all, when we pray one for another, it brings healing to us. And second thing about it, that the prayers of a righteous man or woman availeth much. So with that in mind, let us pray. Father, in the precious name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for this opportunity and every opportunity that we have to be able to come before you. We thank you, God, though even though we're in this building, we're yet under an open heaven. And I pray by the Spirit of Christ Jesus, that even as the meeting begin to go forward, that the Spirit of the Lord will lead in God. I pray that the hearts of the people of God here will begin to be open, begin to acknowledge you, begin to listen to the voice of the Spirit of God, that every decision that is made will be made to give you glory and honor, and that every heart will be continuously open for the Spirit of God to lead and guide us. So heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the gathering. We thank you for the meeting of the hearts, the mind, the soul, and the spirit. We pray that you have your way, God, even upon this board, upon these council members. Lead in God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have adoption of agenda.
May I move?
May I have a second? All in favor?
Can I ask a question about the agenda and about what's stated on there? I have, on the comments of the council, item number 19, is incorrect.
19?
Yeah, over here on the comments of the council. When it comes back in, and I'll look it up.
Are you on the minutes? Are you on the agenda or the minutes?
Adoption of the agenda, okay. I want the consent of the agenda, is what I want to talk about when we get to it.
Okay. Well, that's where we are.
All right.
So go ahead.
It says here on comments of the council, it says that I thank all the attendees for coming to the meeting. It's incorrect, and that the city manager stated that he'd, and for the record, I want to say this is incorrect, and I'll just stop at it. What the city manager says, I shamefully shamed him, not just asking a question. And I find that, I take the objection of that. And that's on the agenda. And I don't accept this.
Okay. Do I have a motion for consent agenda?
May I move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. City manager's report.
Counsel attendees, appreciate you all's attendance and thank you for everything. So just wanted to update you guys on wastewater and our water projects. We're continuing to work closely with LKC Engineering on all our fronts. You know, we have our wastewater and our water treatment plant projects that are moving forward, not big updates on there, but we are continuing to get our water treatment plant, the bid update it with the extra filter, and then also the wastewater treatment plant civils going forward. We're also working on our three asset inventory assessments that include our water, wastewater, and our third AIA as well for stormwater control. Those time lines are still projected for the wastewater treatment plant to begin at the beginning of the year, the, I'm sorry, the water treatment plant beginning at the beginning of the year, the wastewater treatment plant, we're probably looking at midsummer to fall of '26, and then our asset inventory assessments are about a 24 to 36 month process, but we're continuing to move forward on those. I wanted to publicly thank our state representative, Ben Moss, because he's been actively engaged with us, and you know, I've had a few council members reach out to him, and he's been working with us, and he's trying to find us additional funding to relieve some of the pressure off of taxpayers up at the state level. Can't promise anything, but again, just showing up top of the battle, so I really appreciate his support. On economic and residential development, we do have a plan in right now for a 14 duplex, which equals 28 total units in South Hamlet. That's the first project that we've had for a major subdivision in a very, very long time, so we're happy to have that in, and we're reviewing it now. In addition, our 65 acres that the city's selling, along with that adjacent 40 acres that was already sold, that has the potential of bringing in up to 300 homes in that area, and also a lot of commercial businesses to go along the frontage of that road. What's important to understand about this is that that will be a planned development when it comes in, or projected to be a planned development. There's a lot of nuances that goes in with that, but that will come to Planning Board and Council for a final decision, as long as everything goes and runs smoothly. We've also got several developers that are calling and expressing interest in putting in RV parks around city and ETJ. I have a feeling that has to do with the influx of developers and builders that are going to be coming in for AWS, but we've got, I think it's about four or five different people that have contacted us saying that they want to bring in RV parks, and a lot of those will have to come to Planning Board and Council, because the areas that they're looking at would require zoning change. I haven't really looked in depth on those personally to see if it, what kind of RV park they're wanting to put in, if they want it to be temporary or permanent, but we're continuing to work with them as well. We are meeting with Amazon Web Services tomorrow, and that's going to be more to talk about our emergency services capabilities. We're meeting with the county as well on that, Emergency Management Department, and I think that their leadership from the county is going to be in attendance as well. And I just wanted to personally thank the project manager for AWS, Jordan Tate. You know, we were kind of left out of not having a seat at the table when all of this AWS talk initially started, but now that it's went public, Jordan has been nothing less than, you know, immediately and openly conversating with us and talking about our future and the emergency services that we provide directly to them through our fire department. So again, thanks, Jordan Tate, for that. Our community events and downtown development, you know, I want to, you know, just highlight Michelle Pressler here, because she does an outstanding job, and we have big plans on continuing with our downtown events, making our food trucks more, bringing in more food trucks, making it have more community engagement in the heart of our main street, and we want those events to be bigger, better, and more frequent. We also want to bring in, not yet, but in the future, a social district to try to bring in more people to our downtown and let them see what Hamlet really has to offer. There's a lot of interest in our downtown area to include. We have a guy that owns a building and a small business in Aberdeen, and he's currently looking at some of our dilapidated buildings that we have downtown, and he's interested in purchasing and turning it into another museum. So that's just one. I also talked with our bakery that's about to open, and they're finishing up on some of their permitting stuff and putting in some more walls, so we're hoping to have that coffee shop and bakery open within the next 30 days. Also wanted to talk about the culture, you know, and our leadership that we have across our municipality and all our department heads, and I just can't, you know, thank all of our department heads enough. And really, you know, since we've put interim Chief of Police James Carstow in position, I haven't seen such good teamwork, you know, in a very long time, and he is just an outstanding individual that continues to work hard for our community, and I am just super impressed with the way that he runs that police department and the culture within it has definitely taken a 180 turn, and just so proud of our police department and where it's at today. I also wanted to, yeah. I also wanted to talk about some public misinformation, so that our, you know, council knows, and that also that our taxpayers know. You know, it's come to my attention that the Daily Counterjournal and two of our political candidates have been spreading false information suggesting that the city of Hamlet is going to be annexed by Rockingham. This claim's entirely untrue, and there has no legal or factual basis. It's almost laughable. North Carolina doesn't permit one incorporated municipality to be annexed by another, and Hamlet remains an independent city in good standing. And just for an educational note, there's a General Statute 160 Alpha-31 through 160 Alpha-58, municipalities may annex only unincorporated territory that is contiguous or satellite to their corporal limits. There's no legal mechanism that allows one city to annex another incorporated municipality. Any merger, consolidation, or dissolution of a municipality can only occur through the Act of North Carolina General Assembly, and typically requires local approval. Moving on, professional engagement and recognition, you know, I was recently published in the UNC School of Government following my participation at the Service Orientation at the Ohio State University, as well as featured in the Honor Foundation's monthly newsletter, which is for special operations retirees. I just wanted to say it's an honor to be recognized and published by both of those foundations, but it's either a greater, it's even a greater honor to be able to represent Hamlet in that capacity. So in the coming weeks, I'm going to be supporting a mock interview through the Honor Foundation to help these transitioning special operations veterans move into civilian leadership roles, and organizations such as SAS and Deloitte and Bank of America and NASCAR participate in these recruiting pools, and, you know, it's just a large pool of proven leaders. And despite the ongoing toxic rhetoric from a few individuals aimed at undermining our progress, I remain committed to using every available platform to draw positive attention to Hamlet. Those working to destabilize us is just a few, and it speaks volumes about their character. And we remain focused on progress, integrity, and service to the people of Hamlet. For community engagement, my fiancee and I had the honor of attending the Hamlet Senior Center Veterans Luncheon, where I served as the guest speaker, and I just wanted to thank Amanda and her team for hosting such a meaningful event. There's nothing more that I love more than being directly involved with our senior citizens and our veterans, and I just look forward to continue to build that relationship and move Hamlet forward in a positive direction. Another note for our code enforcement and blight removal, we've begun the condemnation process. We've actually condemned the first five properties of 40 that were previously classified as nuisance properties before my arrival. Those initial fives, we held the initial hearing for, only one person had showed up, and he's actually turning that property over to San Hill's Community Development, so that they can renovate that property and put a nice structure there. We've given the other four properties their last 90-day notice, and they'll have a chance to come and appeal that to council, but essentially after that 90-day mark hits, we'll come in front of council and we'll ask for permission to demo those other four properties. And we're going to, those are all residential properties. In the next few weeks, we're going to focus on five commercial buildings downtown as well. But pending any questions, that's all I have for my manager's report.
All right. Thank you. Item number six, City Lake Trail Decision Point.
So one of the things that we've been working on since Farby, on the time that I arrived, was the City Lake Trail, and there was some ARPA funds that were gained through a grant for the city, and some of that was used to buy the old VFW building, some of it was used to do the engineering, which we're still working on, and what we've noticed is, you know, I'm not going to point fingers, but bottom line, we're in a position where we're looking at where we can spend the last $200,000 of that grant money, and we have until December 26 to do that. My recommendation is that we, let me pull this up here, just so everybody sees, right now, the issue is here where there's a lot of wetlands back here that have been identified through engineering, and then also there's some land acquisition or right-of-way acquisition that needs to be taken care of, and then they were going to build the bridge through here and then connect back over to where it's already developed. We've been working with those engineers, and my recommendation and what I'm asking for council is to focus on extending this west side of the trail due to time constraints, and that we will continue to use a phased approach to extend this as budget and grants come up, and that we can use those to finalize that. I don't think that this project's going to happen over the next year, two years. It's going to be a multi-year project that we need to phase, and working with the engineers, I think that Phase One will be extending that west side up to where the bridge would be. Phase Two would be the trail along the east side, and then Phase Three would be the most expensive portion of that, too, and building that boardwalk, that bridge that goes across all the wetlands and swamp. So what I'm asking council for is approval to just focus on that west side for now and to phase the, use a three-phase approach and do the second and third phase as we can find grants and as budget allows in later years. Pending any questions, that's all I have on this, and I am asking for a motion to move forward with the west side.
How much of that grant has been spent already, Chuck?
All of it except for $200,000. I think it's around $180,000, $200,000.
About $380,000 grant total?
Yeah, because if I remember correctly, and the purchase of the VFW happened before I was here, but it was about, what, $160,000? Don't quote me on that, I'm asking.
The purchase of the VFW is about $160,000?
Where did the $400,000 figure come in? For some reason, I've got 400 on the grant.
Yeah, so there was a total of $400,000 ARPA grant, and then part of that was spent towards purchasing the old VFW building, which we own now. It's our building. And then there was another portion of that that was used for engineering, and that's what they're working on right now, to do the design for the trail. And then there's around $180,000, $200,000 left over in that grant that I'm asking to spend on the west side versus, we had talked before and wanted to focus on the east side, and as I started doing more research into it and working with the engineers, I don't think that we're going to be able to achieve that before that December 26 deadline of where that $200,000 has to be expended by. That's a federal grant, and once it hits that December 2026 deadline, it's gone. We don't get to keep it. So I know that we can expend that money on the west side and extend that trail up, and then use that phased approach down the road by seeking more grants and also seeing if the Hamlet budget allows for it in the future.
What about, so it wouldn't be $200,000, it'd be $180,000 remaining of the grant money?
I'm sorry, sir?
$180,000 or $200,000?
It's right in between $180,000 and $200,000. I don't have that exact figure, but it's right around $200,000.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is that going to include lighting and stuff like that also, Chuck?
No, that will be, that will be just to put in the trail. And again, this is going to be, if this is something that the city wants to continue with, it has to be a phased approach, because what was said before I got here, and I think that all of you can remember this, is they thought that they were going to be able to do that trail for the amount that the ARPA grant had in it, that $400,000. When I got here, I was like, there's no way. That boardwalk alone is going to cost around $1 million, and it came in at an estimate, a rough estimate, around $800,000. So I had said, I believe this project is going to cost between $1.5 and $2 million.
If that, if we can get it that cheap?
If we can get it that cheap, right? And we talked about it, and we said, well, let's expend the funds that we have in the federal grant on the trail where we can capitalize that, and we talked about the east side and even removing the asphalt and doing like some stamped rock or dirt trail. But, you know, as we dug into it even more, you know, land acquisition right-of-way came up, the wetlands came up, and, you know, it's just one of those things that I don't think we'll be able to get all that done before December 2026, and if we don't use it, we lose it. So where can we use it? And the west side, we don't have any land acquisition for right-of-way. We don't have any wetlands that we have to deal with. We're just literally going and extending that trail, and we can expend that $200,000 and capitalize on it. Where we can spend it on already, it's just that it goes back to, we use it or we lose it.
What about west side of it?
Motion in order.
We need a motion.
I make a motion. We accept the city manager's recommendation on expending the $200,000 thereabout of the federal money. We up against the time clock. We have no choice in the matter. We either do it or don't do it, and so I make a motion, we just go ahead and expend the $200,000 on the west side of the project.
I second.
I agree. That west side, I go down there a lot and check that Walker Trail. I was down there just Monday week ago, and it's, it needs a lot of maintenance, and it gets mighty, mighty wet and boggy. And when you get up there and walk all the way to the American Legion, it's bad. I mean to, yeah, to the American Legion building. So I agree about the west side. We need to go.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Did I do that? No. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Item number seven, Consider Certification Policy.
One of the issues that we identified as I came into position is that people, employees were going to certification, and our policy was very broad, so it essentially said, hey, if you go get a certification, you get a 2.5% raise. So you can go get any certification you want, and then you come to us and say, hey, we want our 2.5% raise. Myself and our HR director dug into this, and we went on the listserv, we talked to a lot of different municipalities, and most municipalities only pay for specified certifications by department. So I can't just, you know, go out and get, I don't know, if I'm a paramedic and fire department and I get a certification that has nothing to do with being a paramedic and fire department, get that and then come to the city and say, hey, I want a 2.5% raise. So we essentially drafted this policy, and it's been through the attorney, and he recommends, you know, that, he told us that it was legally sound, but essentially what this policy does is it outlines the exact process and then a 2.5% to a 5% increase in pay for specified certifications by department. So what it does is it really organizes the process to get that 2.5% raise if you do complete a specific certification, and it doesn't leave it open so broadly to where, when it comes to budget time, we don't have the ability to budget for somebody going and getting, you know, four different certifications, and then we're giving them a 10% raise. Now this says, okay, these are the certifications that you can get, and this is how much of a pay bump that you would get, and this is the process of getting that. You can't just go to a certification and then come back to us and say, hey, I want my increase. This says, you got to have it approved, it's got to be one of these certifications, and then your department head and the city manager have to sign off on it before you actually get the increase. So you can't come back to us and say, hey, I completed this six months ago, I want six months of back pay. So again, it, policy to streamline, create efficiency, and protect taxpayer dollars.
I think it sounds like a good idea, and I make a motion, we accept this recommendation and adopt a new policy.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number seven, Conveyance of City-Owned Property to Habitat for Humanity.
Ms. Ferrer is here, if we have any questions, but in the last meeting, we talked about six different parcels that she's interested in around the Memorial Park area, and let me pull those up, just so you guys can kind of see them on here. But it's these highlighted ones, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. All of those properties, she is asking for us to sell them to her at the tax value, and then that way she can come in and bring affordable housing into that North Hamlet area. We did discuss this in the last meeting pretty in depth. There is general statute that supports us being able to do this without going through the upset bid process. These are the parcel IDs that go to those six different locations, and the good thing about this is there is a clause in here to where if we were to sell these to Habitat for Humanity, and Habitat for Humanity didn't develop them into affordable housing within five years, and those properties would be automatically titled back over to the city. So pending any questions on that, and again, we do have Ferrer here, if there are any questions. We're asking for approval to sell those to her at the tax value of each parcel, which I have in your packets as well, and they roughly run anywhere from 25, well, actually, I think lower than that, anywhere from around $1,100, if I remember correctly, all the way up to like $3,100.
Right. Could you put that map back up? We turned the screen, I couldn't see it when you originally placed it up there.
I can make it bigger, too, if you need me to.
It's all right. We have a copy.
I make a motion, let me sell the property.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Item number nine, Exchange of Surplus Police Vehicles.
It's another item that we talked about. We did run them through the paper, nobody bid on them, so now what we're asking for is to move forward with the trade deal. There's two options that we have. Number one option is that we trade the four in for two, and it will fully pay for them outside of about $22,000 for the outfit, for all the police lights and the extra stuff that goes into the vehicle. So that would come out of the budget of the police department, which we already have. The second option, and the preferred option, is that we trade in four for four, and that's going to come with a little bit of a finance deal to where for four years, we would be paying $22,000, and then the initial year, we would pay an additional $40,000. So year one would be $65,000 buy-in, which we have in the current budget for the police department, and then for three additional years would be $22,000. So we would be financing four vehicles and putting the trade-in of the four towards that. So it's roughly $80,000 that go towards it upfront, and then we find- And then we finance four vehicles at twenty-two thousand dollars a year. But we would also on that initial year have to pay for the outfit of those four vehicles. So year one would be sixty-five thousand, which we have in our current budget in the police department. And then the following three years would be a loan of around twenty-two thousand dollars. That would bring us four brand-new uh Ford Explorer, the police interceptor vehicles. They're extremely hard to find, number one. And we've looked for deals to be competitive with this over the last couple of months and there is nothing that even comes close to it. And that's why we're recommending going ahead and taking out the loan. Uh the vehicles are going to pay themselves off over the next four years and we're still going to have them. Um so so again, two options. We trade in four, we pay off two, we still gotta pay for the outfit. That's option one. Option two, we trade in four, four-four. It's sixty-five thousand dollars upfront this year that we have in our current police budget and then an additional twenty-two thousand dollars a year for for three years. Any questions? And I I know there's probably going to be questions and we're we're ready for them and myself and Chief Carstow are are here to answer anything that you all may have.
So the difference is the loan.
The difference is the loan. Trading directly with the dealership.
And the second option, you get four vehicles as opposed to two.
That's correct.
Four brand-new ones. Under what? Four brand-new. I like I like the second option.
The four-for-four?
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, our our police vehicles and and we've looked at them across the board. They're number one, they're not they're not uniform, right? They're not they they don't all look the same. So we're trying to we're trying to work on a uniformed police department, number one. Number two, the and and more importantly, really, is those Ford Mavericks that we have are not made for the
Daily garage.
The the daily grind of a police officer. They're not made for pursuit. They're not made to go through the, you know, the the wear and tear that an officer would put through it. And most of our vehicles are already up towards that hundred thousand mile mark. And and we are in need of some in need of some good vehicles that will have a good uh good longevity and more importantly, protect our police officers.
What does it cost to outfit an individual vehicle?
About ten thousand dollars per.
Per vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
So forty thousand and sixty is an operational expense?
Yes.
So actually only twenty-five thousand of the original.
Twenty-five, so to finance, to trade in four-for-four, we would have roughly eighty thousand, eighty-eight thousand um left to finance, which would get financed over a four-year span. Twenty-two thousand of that would come out of the budget this year, which again, we have in the current police budget. With the additional forty thousand and we put in there forty-three thousand for it to fluctuate. So sixty-five thousand dollars total to have four-for-four and get them outfitted.
I like I like the second option.
Well, I'm sure you and the city you and the chief of police have talked about this, discussed it. Uh what is your recommend recommendation? Which option are you recommending and the chief?
Uh so we we have the sixty-five thousand in our in our current police department budget. And by the ordinance, you know, I I could have made and and you guys know me well enough by now. I could have made the the decision and say, hey, it's within the current budget. We can do this and I don't have to bring it to council. I just give them a heads up. I think that's bad business. And I always bring these decisions when it comes to taxpayer dollars to to counsel because ultimately, regardless of what what my authority says, I think when it comes to tax dollars, it needs to be a decision by you all.
What's best, you think, for the police department and the citizens?
I I think I think option two.
Have we already declared these vehicles surplus? So we got to do that tonight. Okay.
Keith, which one were you recommending? Which op- which option two, I think I think financially, uh we're going to come out the better in the long run uh because these vehicles are about forty to forty-three thousand dollars upfront. So you gotta figure if we were just buying these outright, we'd be spending well over two hundred thousand dollars uh where we're spending half the cost for four brand-new vehicles over the next four years.
Well, they're giving nineteen thousand five hundred dollars on trading.
Nineteen five and they've offered.
That's unreal.
And they've offered to actually the current equipment that we have in the car, they're going to have their shop guys professionally pull them out so that they save the resale value so that nothing gets torn up uh to do it appropriately. And they will they will deliver the four new vehicles, pick up the Mavericks, take out all the equipment and then bring all of our equipment back to us.
I make a motion that we're.
Recommendation from the city manager and the chief of police, I make a motion. We accept motion uh option number two.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, comments from attendees.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Esko Latimer. Um as always, I like to try to come in here with some good ideas. Uh but there's one thing that I would want to kind of clear it up. There are a lot of misconceptions being thrown around uh regards to city policy and politics. I am not one of those candidates who said anything about annexation. So I'm not exactly sure who our city manager was speaking about, but I was not one of those two candidates. And as far as the city council is, um there's a lot of council members who want to find out about my past and my past charges. And I wanted to give the city council, the opportunity and administration to address those with me so we can clear up any misinformation because half the truth is being told and not the whole truth. You're spinning, you you're putting out the information, but you're not telling them what happened at the end. So I would like to give the city council, those members who are very vocal online or administration who is very vocal online, to have a chance to um to voice their opinion or ask about that right now.
About your background?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. O- o- one particular one is about my daughter. Well, both of my should have could. My charges both stemmed about my daughter. Uh but the the movie theater was the biggest one. Um and what has been spread around about one council member right now could possibly jeopardize my custody of my daughter. And I spent five years and twenty thousand dollars to make sure that I can see my daughter. This is the most I've seen my daughter this year in five years. So I don't take those comments very lightly. I just wanted to let you know that as a father, as a concerned father. So I just wanted to give the council any opportunity to ask me about that or administration to ask me about that.
What would the outcome?
Well, all the cases were dismissed. All of them were dismissed. Uh so there was no plea deal. I was never found guilty. I'm not, I don't have a felony on my record. It was all dismissed. So if anyone doesn't have any questions, it looks like you don't have any question. I think we can put that to rest now. The other part of the I want to discuss was, um according to the mayor, eighteen months before the facility, the water facility is going to be built. And I came up with some ideas. You didn't like that. And I came up with some ideas on how to pay for that, the water testing kits. You didn't like those either. So my question is, what are we supposed to do as residents and citizens in the midst of that if that situation with the water happens again? And there's a lot of talk about a lot of money being spread around, but what I was asking for, I was only asking for six dollars uh for a water testing kit to be sent out to especially at least the elderly because we've had two increases on our water bill and then we had another increase on our trash. And a fixed income individual, it's hard for them to come up with that extra money. So to have that kind of drinking water, so they gotta drink the water that's tainted and then go out and buy water. And so that's a little hard for them or even getting out. So what would be the city's recommendation? Do we do in the midst of that plant or the administration in the midst of we do with that plant? He's so welcoming.
Thank you, sir.
I don't, you don't get to answer the question or that's it?
We might when you sit down.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Esko.
Hold on one sec. Uh John, would you like to correct the timeline for when our water treatment plant will be starting renovations?
Well, the water treatment plant should is projected to start renovations January, February timeframe. It was supposed to start in September, but due to DQ uh putting a provision on our on our civil plans to add a a a fourth filter, we had to go back through and now we're back in updating the bid. So it pushed our our timeline for construction uh uh to to the right just a little bit.
So January or February twenty twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Start the clock.
It's going.
Um good to see our town manager. Safe for the last two weeks. We haven't seen him in the office for at least four to six weeks. I don't know who put him in timeout, but uh I guess we're not going to get that answer, are we? Also, um your city attorney said unequivocally that um he concluded the sexual harassment case against our town manager without ever interviewing the claimant or the complainant or the victim, however you want to label her. I'm not sure how that happens, but I also want to know, are we going to reopen that investigation? We're going to have a third objective party assess the situation? Or are we just going to ignore that that even happened? Now you're on the clock. Nothing?
And uh mayor and council members, as is the city's policy, we don't discuss personnel matters in open session.
Glorious. Perfect. It's exactly what I expected. And it's exactly what William Toller is going to write in the paper.
Thank you. Who else have we got? Sure, come up to the mic, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see everyone. Uh I'm Helena Brown. Uh just a question about the street closures. I read that, well, we know that Main Street's already closed off and then Raleigh Street's going to be closed off starting Monday?
Supposed to be Monday through Wednesday only, we hope.
Oh, okay. So I was just wondering how that was going to work with Seaboard Festival and just in general.
They promised they'll have it open.
Okay. Thank you so much and thank you for all that you all do for Hamlet.
Main Street was going to be open, John. Didn't they give us a timeline? Thursday?
Supposed to be Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
I had the fun question.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Amber Daniels and I'm not sick this time, so y'all can understand me better. I didn't come here tonight to attack anybody. I actually came to give some thanks. So first of all, I want to shout out Maurice with the Parks and Rec. He did a great job this soccer season, making sure that our kids were safe and they had a very good enjoyable experience out there. Unfortunately, my team, we didn't win the first two rounds or anything, but it was cool. The kids had a great time. The ones who didn't win, they deserved it. So I just want to thank him and shout his team out for that. The young ladies who worked the concession stands, they are top tier. They have great customer service and very friendly. So just wanted to express that thanks tonight. Again, thank you to the city manager for taking the accountability with the confusion at the beginning and getting that all worked out. You could have ducked your tail and kept this out here at the other ballparks, but you made sure all that was taken care of. So I appreciate that. Y'all know, we just had the Coltrane Festival. It was good to see some of our council people out there. Uh Mayor Amy was there. I saw Councilman Stewart is out there as well. So it's great to see people moving in the community that are elected in. I think that's what we need more of from the city and the county. So it's really good to see that. And last thing, hopefully I'll use all my time up. I do talk a lot. Um Girl Scouts, I know everybody knows us for selling cookies, but we are doing our fall product sale right now and it's getting ready to come to an end in a couple of weeks. So if you have any Girl Scouts, you know any, I'm a troop leader, feel free to get in contact with me. And um we would love the support. So just wanted to bring some awareness out there. So thank you. I think everybody's doing a great job. Early voting starts Thursday. Get out there, vote, use your voice. Let's not argue. Let's just get the job done.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from council. Mr. Martin? All right, Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank all the attendees coming up and expressing. I'd like to give a shout out to Michelle Pressler and all her staff at the Museum and Depot for that beautiful mural we got up on the Birmingham. Man, that is, if you haven't seen it, I've gone down quite a bit and it's beautiful. And thank you so much for the hard work that you and your staff have done and members. And I'd like to also congratulate and wish the fans for all the candidates for the upcoming election. Thank you for having enough concern and wanting to lead this city and be part of it. And thank you for not being afraid of the competition. Thank you for coming out and supporting and wanting to be part of a solution. And thank you. Thank you and good luck to all the candidates. That's good news.
All right, Mr. Clus.
Yes, ma'am. I have several things. One thing I'd like to say is Facebook is not just for Richmond County. Everybody sees Facebook. Everybody sees the comments. And some of the comments I've been reading, I wouldn't want to live in Hamlet. So we need to be careful about our comments and the things that we say on Facebook. Uh like I said before, I don't look on Facebook a whole lot, but occasionally I do. And it's just, I'm thinking, man, you know, let's calm down. Let's make Hamlet a place for everybody to live. Uh to Mr. Latimer's comment about the water testing kit, we have about forty-five hundred customers, water customers. That would equal to twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I mean, it's not just six dollars, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I I put in the grand in there. Well, now that spreadsheet, there's fifteen options. I broke it down. It could go down to twelve dollars and you can split it between the two. Six dollars and six dollars, six dollars for the city and six dollars for the individual. Or the individual paid a whole twelve dollars. So I did cover this, yes, sir.
Yeah, but it's still twenty-seven thou- that thousand dollars if you do six dollars.
I think if you look at the council call to cabinet, I think it's well worth it.
So uh and the thing about it was, we had to stay here just a few weeks ago and they went out to several people's house and they asked them, I want to test your water. And the folks said no. They wouldn't even let them test their water. So I mean.
When did that happen?
That happened when the guy from the state was here.
Okay, that's.
Okay.
Ambiguous, so thanks, Tony.
You're welcome. Some questions too. There's a city manager on, oh my goodness. I'm trying to think of the name of the street. It's the street that comes out of the back of Fairview Heights. They patched a hole there. There's another hole there.
Come back Clay Street?
No, not where Ms. Williams lives.
Oh, Fairview.
Park Street on the side of the ballpark.
It comes out right behind uh when you pick up your kid and go out of Fairview Heights. There's a hole there that needs to be fixed. And I had, Ms. Brown, I had something about the railroad tracks. I uh city manager and myself had a discussion. I've seen them close both Main Street and Raleigh Street and they say they're going to have it open in three days. That'll be a miracle. I'll be honest with you. And I my question was, what about police and fire and rescue? And so I hope they do have it done in three days. I hope. Um also, I'm sorry I didn't make it out to the Coltrane event. Uh that morning, I was at urgent care. That afternoon, I was in bed all day because I pulled a muscle in my back and I was in bad shape and I'm sorry I missed it. Early voting is the sixteenth. They have changed our voting places. To vote, if you're in March Creek one, you have to go to Ninth Grade Academy. If you're in March Creek two, you go to Central Office. So I wanted everybody to realize, you don't go to the Presbyterian Church no more and you don't go to Methodist Church anymore. They've changed the voting places. So please keep that in mind, uh but you can go to Agriculture Office starting the sixteenth and vote early. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stewart?
So I just really wanted to talk about early voting, which starts Thursday. Uh council councilman covered that, but most days is eight to five. I think with the exception of Saturday, which is eight to three. So please exercise your right. Early voting starts Thursday and the earlier the better. We we all know. Six, six-thirty. Um early the better. Get in the votes. On voting day, anything can happen, you know, with the. On voting day, anything can happen, you know, with the rain and cold and all kinds of things. So encourage your family members, everybody, take them, give them a ride. Don't wait to, don't wait to November 4th. Let's vote as early as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Procham?
Um, my comment was relative to early voting also. I think it's extremely important and, you know, we all used to have to vote on one single day, but we don't have to do that any longer. You do have the ease and flexibility and your schedule to early vote and it is, as Tony said, going to be at the county agricultural extension office, which is in the strip mall with the health department and DSS in Rockingham. So that's where all of the early voting will take place. Only the new polling places will be active on actual voting day. So I hope everybody will go out and exercise this God-given right.
And I would say, Madam Mayor, please tell as many people as you can, I'm sure people are still going to go to those churches because that has been years on top of years on top of years. So anybody you know, neighbors, friends, um, let them know that those polling sites have changed on, on voting day.
All right. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and that, um, it's to promote early screening, well, promote screening for early detection, uh, timely diagnosis, comprehensive treatment, and, um, if you have, you know, family members to talk to about whether or not this is something that's in your family history or family DNA, um, just kind of have those conversations, but just again, um, early detection is the key, so.
One thing, Seaboard Festival, week after next. Can't forget that. That's Michelle's responsibility.
Yes.
24th, I think, isn't it?
Last Saturday of this month.
25th. Yeah, it's 25th.
And, and I would say, Madam Mayor, of course, I didn't want to steal your shine from breast cancer, but, you know, I don't think that's something that, everybody in here has been touched by that, whether it's through you, your family member, a neighbor, a friend. I have college classmates right now that, that's dealing with that and there's no age, there's no color, um, there's no limit to it. So please bring the awareness and let's do all we can to, uh, to promote. And of course, not just breast cancer because, but that's the month we're in, so I just want to give, give some shout-outs to that and, and, and make sure that we're all a part of that.
All right. Now I need a motion to go into closed session per N.C. General Statute Attorney-client privilege.
I move.
Sir.
All in favor?